I'd like to call the order of the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Maplewood for Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. The first item is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Falkingham. Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Homa.
Here.
Councilmember Maddox.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg, a quorum is present.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Falkingham.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilmember Falkingham is excused. Item number five is approval of the minutes for August 8th, 2025, the City Council Work Session Minutes, the City Council Regular Meeting Minutes, and the City Council Closed Session Minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to second. Are there any changes or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. Item number six is a public hearing establishing tax rates for the City of Maplewood and the Maplewood Special Business District for 2025. Has anyone signed up?
No one has signed up to comment.
Item number seven is the first of two public comment sections. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, we have Charles Callaway, who's a resident.
Howdy.
I'm in Ward 1, 2618 La Cleet Station Road, and the neighborhood got together. We've decided that the traffic is pretty much unbearable, and by traffic, I mean speeding and just the amount of traffic. And so we got together, we have a petition here requesting the installation of speed bumps on our street. As I drive around Maplewood, I've noticed more and more speed bumps throughout the city. I think it's a good idea. And we're also requesting, along with the speed bumps, a speed limit of 15 miles per hour. That way, nobody drops a transmission or differential or whatever. And, you know, we were at the meeting Saturday down at the park with Amber and our council people, and it was very informative. I enjoyed it. If we do it again, I'll definitely be there. And I understand that budgeting is a big concern, and I get that. I have noticed, I mean, I've lived there my whole life in that house, so I have noticed that whenever, on weekends, when there's the 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. parking is not in effect, and you can park your cars there, traffic has to slow up because they have to let oncoming cars go around. So I don't understand why we have no parking 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. Monday through Friday. You're just kind of inviting speedsters or people, basically, that are cutting through, they don't want to take Hanley, and they don't want to take Big Bend, so they take La Cleet Station Road. And even 18-wheelers. I was going to take a picture of one the other day. We had an 18-wheeler going north, or yeah, northbound from Manchester to, I guess, probably Walmart or Menards or someplace, but that's a no 18-wheeler truck traffic zone, but they still do it. So we feel like we need to do something. There's young people there now, walking dogs, and everybody's pretty much out enjoying the neighborhood. And whenever the buses load and unload down at Rannells and La Cleet Station Road at that stop sign, you know, if people are speeding, they don't make a complete stop, I mean, there's a school bus there and there's kids. It just, it doesn't make any sense, so we would appreciate it if y'all would take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Any questions?
You've already spoken with the Director of Public Works and...
Yes, we have, with Anthony.
We'll get the process started.
We do have a copy, but we can take it personally. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else signed up for a public comment?
No one else has signed up at this time.
Okay. There will be a second public comment session, section later on, so if you hear anything that we talk about that you want to add to, please feel welcome to it later on. Item number eight, our announcements.
Yeah, I've got a couple. This Saturday, 9:13, there's an event together for Asador del Sur in light of the fire that the business had. Most of the businesses in Maplewood are doing some kind of a donation process. There's a very informative page on the Chamber of Commerce website to see who's engaged. It's pretty cool. 9:20, we have the Ward 2 meeting. Is that at the Yale Green Space?
Yes.
Awesome. Our council members who are awesome will be there. You should go. And then, all month long for September, there is a Weekend on Wheels Food Drive Competition between the Fire Department, the Police Department, and Public Works. Items can be dropped off at the Firehouse, the Police Station, or at City Hall.
And they can specify who...
Yeah, I mean, you know, go Public Works.
Okay. Are there any other announcements? Item number nine is a presentation from our Sustainability Commission. Heidi, Shane, please keep it under an hour.
Very funny. Thank you for having me today. I'm here because Stefan Denson, who is our leader, is not able to join us. It's been my pleasure to serve on the commission, and each year, I think we come before you and let you know a little bit about what we're doing, so you know we're up to some good. So we spent a lot of time working on the Maplewood Sustainability Plan, so we had a roadmap, and it's still being refined at this time to make sure that we're not violating any state or federal laws or anything with our suggestions, and that we bring that before the council for consideration. And it has everyone's input, and it's very, very close to being done. We've also participated in No Mow April, which is an excellent program where you don't have to mow your lawn in April, and it's actually quite challenging if you've tried it, because you really want to at the end, and you just do it for the bees and whatnot, and that's been a big success, and we're hoping to do that again in 2026. We're considering, right now, we're talking about Leave the Leaves, which is the flip side of No Mow April, so you leave the leaves because it's good for all the little bugs and things that are good for the environment. So we're hoping to come up with a sign, perhaps, find some money somewhere, have people pay for it, too, you know, have them come and give $5 for the sign, but they're reusable, and we were even talking about getting a sponsor for it, so having a double-sided sign where you had somebody on the one side graciously donating some money. We were going to run that by the higher-ups to see if that was allowed, but I know in the past, Garden Heights has given me donations for the corner of Oxford and Big Bend, and so there's others, too, that are more local, that would be approached if that was something that could be done as a way to pay for this. We're trying to be creative and be stewards of our funding that we have, which is pretty much nothing but, you know. We're trying to get creative. Okay, residential solar lighting, so I was very much involved in that, because it was interesting to me. We partnered with Washington University, and they actually had a class. It was a special class. The kids, the students, signed up for the class and participated in this and took different aspects of it, and created a map for us where, in Maplewood, we know where there's darker areas and they need lighting. And we consulted with Brentwood, who has currently solar street lighting, and the last council meeting, we talked about presenting to the, I didn't mean council, the commission, rather, sorry, the Sustainability Commission. We were talking about narrowing down those sites that we have identified in each ward that have a particularly dark area, and presenting that to the council to talk about next steps, if that was something that was feasible and the money was there for those solar lights, and we're really excited about it. The students took into account different types of lighting. You know, there are different types of light that's available, and the height and the locations, and literally came into Maplewood several times, and one of our commission members, well, the Toms did it, Tom Reed and Tom Vanshle, they actually went without their headlights, don't tell the police, but they drove around Maplewood looking and confirming all that data that the students gave us, so I'm really excited when that finally gets to you and you can consider that. I think we all are, not just me, but I'm one of many. And then Pocket Forest, that's something that we talked about just recently. We have a lot of heat islands here, and we were looking at the city map, trying to figure out if there was an area where we could plant more trees and mow less and save money on water and labor for mowing lawns and on a public space. We don't have any really great ideas right now. It was just a, you know, just a discussion at this point of, is there anywhere that we might be able to put some trees down that now there's grass or some unused land? Not, there's not a lot, I can tell you, but if there is a patch, then we'll try to find it and let you know. So I'm open to questions. I don't have anything else at this time.
Would the Sustainability Commission make recommendations with regards to green space during our comprehensive plan process? Currently, we don't have any real guidelines for development that would minimize impervious surfaces.
I think the commission would love to talk about that more. We have not talked about it yet, so I don't, I would welcome more information about that and bring it to the commission. So I think it's a great idea. We do have a lot of impervious surfaces here, and some of them are privately owned. Most of them probably are privately owned, but there is a case to be made for saving money and less labor hours to maintain that, you know, over time, you know, concrete's very expensive to replace and asphalt, and it's frankly just unneeded, in my opinion only, a lot of the time where it's present. So is that what you were getting at, Mayor?
Yes, and also if there's any grant programs or loan programs that would allow people to, I know that MSD has their...
Right, rain escaping.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Program available, but, you know, in some cases, it typically costs more to provide, you know, pervious paving surfaces, and, but there is new technology, too, with regards to different types of pavers that we really need to take a look at and determine whether they're appropriate for our community.
Right. We've talked about other things, too. This is not the extent of everything we've talked about, and when you mentioned that, I'm thinking of the ribbon driveways as a topic of discussion that we've had in the pavers, that we could, you know, work with and present to the council as an alternative to allowing that again, because right now, they're not allowed. They're grandfathered in. Is that the right word these days? I don't think that is the right word.
Yeah.
But I think there's another word somewhere. But anyway, that's what we have right now, and we were talking about bringing back the ribbon driveway, or just bringing back something that's a little more pervious.
Yeah, I think the term grandfathered is grandfathered.
Yeah, it's a tough one, right? At least for me, it is. I'd like to find something else, in my humble opinion.
I just want to say thank you for the work you do. I think it's really important. Wish more cities took it as seriously as y'all do. And I just wanted to mention about the lighting that you were talking about. I remember a couple of years ago, which probably means it was like this spring, now, this was a couple of years ago, we did a citizen survey, and one of the most talked about things after speeding in sidewalks was lighting.
Right.
So I would welcome and champion recommendations on where we are deficient in lighting.
You'll really love the presentation that you're going to get from Washington University, just top-notch, and we can do it again, too. We have a great relationship with them now that we've developed, and so moving forward, it's a great resource for us to tap into, and we have a special project that's very narrow and focused, that we can get them excited about, especially with sustainability programs. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is unfinished business. First one of those is Bill 6285, final reading, adopting the records retention schedules published by the Missouri Secretary of State in authorizing this destruction of city records in accordance therewith.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Okay, Bill 6285 is approved as Ordinance 6079.
Thank you. Next item is Bill 6286, final reading, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 30, Human Relations, Section 30-19, Definitions to Update Terminology and Add New Definitions, Section 38-8, Unlawful Acts Prohibited to Expand Protected Categories, and Adding New Sections 30-30, Employment Discrimination Prohibited, and 30-31, Discrimination by Contractors with the City.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to second. Do we have discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Bill 6286 is approved as Ordinance 6080.
Thank you. Next is Bill 6287, final reading, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Center for Advanced Skills Training in Law Enforcement to provide law enforcement training services. And I see that our chief is not here, otherwise he could explain the advantages, which I think all of us know, but I just want to do that for the people that, whose tax dollars are being used to make this happen. Is there any discussion? Did I ask for a motion?
No. Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Bill 6287 is approved as Ordinance 6081.
Next item is Bill 6288, final reading, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 50, Traffic and Motor Vehicles by Adding a New Section, Section 50-97, Golf Carts and Low-Speed Vehicles.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Or did we beat it to death last time? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
No.
Bill 6288 is approved as Ordinance 6082.
Next is Bill 6289, final reading, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 50, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 50-119, Streets Closed to Commercial Vehicles, to add Roseland Terrace and La Cleet Station Road.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any discussion?
This actually came up at our Ward 1 meeting, so it was really nice that we could say, doing this Tuesday, so.
So Mr. Callaway that was here was one of his concerns about La Cleet Station Road, correct?
Yes, we had some other... Yeah. It was both the speed and some of the other trucks on it, so at least this addresses one of the concerns.
We had some other residents that brought this up as well.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Okay, Bill 6289 is approved as Ordinance 6083.
Thank you. Next is Bill 6290, final reading, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 56, Zoning, Section 56-204, Permitted Uses in the CB District, and Section 56-232, Permitted Uses, AB District, to allow pop-up retail stores in the CB District in residential and office uses in the AB District.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Okay, Bill 6290 is approved as Ordinance 6084.
And next item is a resolution, 25-38, entering into a professional services agreement with Creative Entourage for the Comprehensive Branding Initiative in the amount of $40,000.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion?
Are they hip and gritty like Maplewood? Tell us.
We're going through a discovery process to determine if everybody thinks we're hip and gritty.
Oh, okay.
We want to make sure that all voices are represented in this process.
Yeah.
Right on.
And once we have our new branding, then we can, I'll buy everyone a t-shirt so that we can represent our city.
That's on the record, Mayor.
I want a sticker for my laptop and my car.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Resolution 2538 is approved.
Next item is Resolution 25-39, entering into professional services agreement with We Are Novella LLC for Bond Referendum Communications Consulting Services in the amount of $20,000.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any discussion? I think that the intent here is to make it clear to the taxpayers of Maplewood what they would be, the value proposition for police facilities and City Hall renovations. So look forward to seeing what they suggest for us. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Resolution 2539 is approved.
Next item is Resolution 2540, entering into professional services agreement with TWM Consulting Engineering for ADA Transition Plan Engineering Services. Need a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to second. Amber, could you briefly delineate the scope of services here so that the public understands what we're doing?
We've got our Public Works Director here tonight, so I'm going to ask him to step up and give you a little bit of an overview.
The scope of services will essentially entail, we're going to, very similar, if everyone recalls the traffic study that we did, we're going to basically do an in-house survey. We're going to have our consultant, they use Shocky, was it Shocky? Is their subconsultant, they're going to go out and gather information citywide to try to find out the target areas that we can do a deep dive on the analysis. Over the years, I've also been collecting areas of interest or areas of potential concern that we're going to go into. So once we gather that data, then the consultant's going to go through and evaluate those. The consultant is present if you have any additional, if you have any questions, but they've got a newer technology. It's referred to as LiDAR. It's essentially a radar technology that allows them to go through and check out the changes in topography. It's state-of-the-art. It's one of the reasons I was actually really interested in this firm. We had nine good quality firms apply, but, and then the idea is to go through, and similar to what we did with the traffic study, is kind of categorize it as a worst-first basis, and obviously, City Hall and public buildings are going to be evaluated. All parks are going to be evaluated, as well as, you know, whether we do every single sidewalk in town, that's still being debated. We're going to have to negotiate that as we're doing this agreement, but we're definitely going to make sure we try to at least touch on every area of interest that residents identify or businesses identify as areas of concern.
Besides ADA compliance, will there be recommendations for universal design implementation?
We have not touched on that at this point. We haven't gotten into that, but we can take a look at that. I mean, the universal design, some of those concepts can get very, very pricey.
Yeah.
So as nice as it would be to have universal design, I'm not sure that's really realistic.
Where there are opportunities, and you see those opportunities, bring them to our attention, and if they're cost-effective, then we'll certainly consider those.
Agreed, definitely. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Resolution 2540 is approved.
Next item is Resolution 25-41, authorizing the purchase of computer equipment from Go Inet in the amount of $32,477, I'm sorry, $27. And I need a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to second. This is the one evening we need Sean here, since he's our internet and computer expert. But have we worked with this company in the past?
This is our contracted IT provider, so they're purchasing the equipment through the state contract with Dell, and we are implementing with this purchase a five-year replacement plan for all staff computers that was not previously in place. We'll be replacing some machines that are as old as 2013.
Thank you.
And we are under budget on this?
About $2,000 under budget.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Resolution 2541 is approved.
The next item is Bill 6291, first reading, amendment, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 56, Zoning, Section 56-3, Definitions, Section 56-72, Permitted Uses in the SR District, Section 56-106, Permitted Uses in the LR District, Section 56-131, Permitted Uses in the MR District, and Sections 56-880, Living, Group Living Facilities to redefine group homes and allow group homes as permitted uses in residential districts.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion to second, and we've already had a discussion with regards to group homes and the fact that the state definition does not define a halfway house as a group home.
Correct. The definition from Chapter 89 of group home, which is very similar to the definition that's being proposed in this ordinance, is expressly limited to group homes for the mentally or physically disabled, and would not include a halfway house.
Okay. And for those that are attending tonight, the idea is that previously, group homes, sorry, group homes were a conditional use, required a conditional use permit, so that there was a hearing required and before they were approved, and this would change that to being a permitted use, which doesn't require a conditional use permit. Any further discussion?
I just want to point out that if we have questions about the memo submitted from P&amp;Z, we do have Mr. Vandennacher here, and I'm sure he'd be happy to answer those. It's clear to me, so thank you. clear to me, so thank you. Thank you to P&amp;Z.
Hopefully you all received my memo as well.
We did.
We got it a little late, sorry.
No, it was great, and it was an education on that, so that was helpful, it's sort of what we needed. I was unaware of a lot of those facts, so thank you. I'll be a guest tonight.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, Bill sixty-two ninety-one, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter fifty-six zoning, Section fifty-six dash three definitions, Section fifty-six dash seventy-two permitted uses, SR District, Section fifty-six one oh six permitted uses in the LR District, Section fifty-six one thirty-one permitted uses MR District, and Section fifty-six eight eighty, group living facilities to redefine group homes and allow group homes as permitted uses in residential districts.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This item will then move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Next item is Bill sixty-two ninety-two, first reading, establishing tax rates for the City of Maplewood and the Maplewood Special Business District for 2025.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Would you like to add anything to the conversation?
I just wanted to remind council that this, these are preliminary numbers. It is a reassessment year, so there were a lot of taxes that were protested and went before the Board of Equalization, so we will get final numbers from the Board of Equalization. We usually get those around the fifteenth of September. Sometimes we get them a little bit earlier, sometimes a little bit later, and so then we will actually, those will be our final numbers for our assessed valuations, and those will be what are used to actually set our tax rate. So, at the next meeting, the ordinance will have slightly different numbers, so I just wanted to prepare everybody so nobody was surprised when the numbers aren't exactly the same. So, I just wanted to make sure that we had something out there, so they will probably change. I believe our assessed valuation will go down because of all the protested taxes, but exactly what that is, I don't know. It usually changes more significantly on a reassessment year than it does on a non-reassessment year, so.
So, the Hancock Amendment limits the tax rate, but not the, it doesn't affect the assessment, the gains that St. Louis County gets from the increased assessed value?
So, the way the Hancock Amendment works is it only affects the tax rate that is the actual rate that is charged. So, the assessed valuation is set by the county assessor, and it has nothing to do with the actual tax rate. So, the county assessor determines what the assessed valuations are countywide, completely separate from the tax rates. And then what happens is, is everybody submits their tax rate, and you have, there are guidelines on what your tax rate can be. So, our tax rate can only go up by CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index, which is determined by the Missouri Tax Commission.
Mission.
Sorry, I couldn't think of that word for a second. The Missouri Tax Commission every year, so they will determine what they consider the CPI for this year, and it can go up by that and by any new construction that we have within the city limits. And that's all our tax rate can go up by every single year. So, our tax rate cannot go up very much because we don't have a lot of new construction, and so we really can only go up by CPI, only up to our tax rate ceiling. And so, once we hit our tax rate ceiling, we cannot go up at all. It doesn't matter, so.
Do you know if there's any update on the senior tax freeze program from St. Louis County?
Just that everybody is very confused as to what that's going to mean for tax rates, including all of my colleagues. We all talk about it regularly, that what is this meaning for our tax rates, because nobody really knows what that's, how that's going to affect tax income, how that's going to affect future taxes. I mean, and I don't know that anybody at the county knows, because we can't find anybody over there that knows, can't find anybody in the state legislature that knows. Nobody's really positive. It's kind of, we'll wait and see, so. That's where we're at right now.
Any other questions for Lexi?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for answering questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, I'm sorry, establishing tax rates for the City of Maplewood and the Maplewood Special Business District for 2025.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The measure will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Next item is Bill sixty-two ninety-three, first and, first reading, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty, Human Relations, Section thirty dash nineteen definitions to revise the definition of source of income to comply with state law.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and the changes were to, just to comply with changes in the state law and make sure that we're legal. Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, Bill sixty-two ninety-three, first, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty, Human Relations, Section thirty dash nineteen definitions, to revise the definition of source of income to comply with state law.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Next item is Bill sixty-two ninety-four, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter two, Administration, Article seven, Boards and, Boards, Commissions and Authorities, Division one, generally to amend Section two dash three sixty-one, Boards and Commissions, and add Section two dash three sixty-two Rules of Procedure.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
This does, this has the attendance requirements that we talked about, is that right? Okay.
Any other, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter two, Administration, Article seven, Boards, Commissions and Authorities, Division one, generally to amend Section two, two dash three sixty-one, Boards and Commissions, and add Section two dash three sixty-two Rules of Procedure.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Last bill is Bill sixty-two ninety-five, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter two, Administration, Article seven, Boards, Commissions and Authorities, to add Division five Police Advisory Board.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and for those people in attendance, Amber, would you like to provide a brief description of?
Sure. We were proposing this at the last work session, so this has come forward now for your approval, to form a police advisory board, a five-member advisory body that will meet at least quarterly to advise our police department on policies, procedures, community engagement, and investment in all of the things that they need to invest in, which are considerable.
So, if you're interested in serving on the police advisory board, let Amber know. So, any further discussion?
Just would like to say that I think this is a great way for us to get residents involved in advising the local police department.
Assuming the application process will be like the other boards, where you just go to the website and put in?
It will be. After you approve this in the third reading after your next meeting, we'll go ahead and put together that application process and open that up on the city's website and do some social media advertising.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter two, Administration, Article seven, Boards, Commissions and Authorities, to add Division five Police Advisory Board.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. The next item is council and staff reports, mayor's report. I'm glad to report that tomorrow morning, Mary Killian, who's sitting out there, and myself, will be meeting with Father Ruby, who's the, in charge of Immaculate Conception, with the intent of seeing if we can put together a senior community center in the education building there. And I have a business plan, which Mary has in her hand, and we're going to present it and see if there's interest from the church, the archdiocese, to provide vital services for our senior citizens. Ward one?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the community that on Monday, the fifteenth, at four forty-five is a third of the mid-county protest for trans rights occurring at the intersection of Big Ben and Manchester. It's just a really great way to get involved in probably one of the most positive protest opportunities I've had the pleasure of being a part of. Trans community really needs you right now, and so we'd love to have you there. We need as many allies as possible. It's one thing for myself, as a non-binary person, to attend a protest like that, but for straight allies to be in attendance would be super impactful, so please, please join, and we will see you there. I also want to thank all of the Ward One residents that came to the Ward meeting. Councilmember Garcia, it was nice enough to take a lot of notes. We have some action items, and we will be getting back to those that have asked for us to reach out, so more to come on that.
Okay. Next is the Ward two report.
I have nothing to report.
Just a reminder that our Ward two meeting will be at the Yale Open Space, which is on Yale in the green space that's gated on Saturday, September twentieth, ten AM.
Thank you. Ward three?
Yeah, and another reminder for the Ward three community meeting, Saturday, October fourth, ten AM, at Greenwood Park, which is the corner of Kensington and Commonwealth in Ward three. Hope to see Ward three members and anyone else who would like to attend there.
And at those Ward meetings, we have city administrators, director of public works. The police department is represented, so you have an opportunity to not only talk to your elected officials, but city staff. Item number E is city attorney's report.
No report tonight?
Next is city manager's report.
I will report that there are also usually donuts at the Ward meetings.
Yes.
I almost asked.
Additionally, just to formalize what I already reported to you at our last meeting, that we did officially receive our four-year CLEA accreditation for our police department, and the certificate of accreditation is in this meeting packet. We are also going to be honoring, well, we won't be, but the region will be honoring our fire department for two actions that occurred over this past year at an upcoming award ceremony for their distinguished service to not only our community, but those around us. I did include some additional detail on the response to the Osadora del Sur fire in my memo. Thank you, Councilmember Garcia, for mentioning the event that's occurring this Saturday. There will be city staff in attendance. A reminder that filing will open shortly for the April seventh, 2026 municipal election. We have seats in Ward one, two, and three, one in each Ward, that will be open for election. Petitions can be picked up starting September sixteenth, and filing will be open between Tuesday, October seventh, and Tuesday, October twenty-eighth. Should there be more than two candidates filing per Ward, we will have to have a runoff election in February, and until we can change the charter, we're stuck with that procedure, which means that you all have to file much earlier than your counterparts in other surrounding cities. Finally, I want to point you to the Human Services Commission Community Survey Draft that I have included in your packet. This is presented for your awareness and feedback by the Human Services Commission, which plans to do a targeted but broad-based survey of under-resourced individuals in our community to better understand how the commission can be meeting their needs and better serving them. I think as the commission works through what its priorities are, the sense is they want more data to substantiate needs, so not only is the survey in your packet, but also a plan for how they will be delivering that in person and online for about eight weeks this fall. If there are questions I can answer about that, or feedback I can provide to them, let me know today or via email, and I'll be sure to share it with the commission that will meet again the first Wednesday of October.
Thank you. Item number thirteen is the second public comments section. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Item number fourteen is motion to hold a closed session, which I believe none is needed, and so I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?